Praise the Lord. Them that are online, please confirm that you can hear me. Praise God.
Praise God.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Welcome to our Bible study today. Today being a Tuesday. Last week, you were not able to meet due to the memorial service, which was happening. And so we postponed it up to this week. I'm happy that you have joined. We have some other people joining us. Physical here in the church boardroom. And also them that are able to join us online, please. We will come you. We want to just start off by a word of prayer. And Peter, if you can hear me, you can pray for us as we start. So see, Peter cannot hear me. Who is this with galaxy tab A? Please may I know you so that I don't call you galaxy tab A.
Am I the one? I don't know.
Yes, you are the one.
Yeah. My name is Nancy Weirago.
Oh. You, you can kindly pray for us.
Yeah, I first greet you all in the name of Jesus. I'm Nancy. A fellowship in South Dakota District. I started with you, but he, for the last two years I was away. So I'm happy, you have not even gone so far if last week you never met.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to join you again today. So that we can move together. Let's pray. Our Father and our God, this evening, we approach the throne of thy mercy with thanksgiving and praises in our hands. Want to thank you Jehovah, for your care and love and the protection and your provision you have been providing to us. We want to thank you Father for making it today for each one of us to be in this Bible study. As we go deeper and deeper to know and to learn your Almighty Jehovah. May we walk this journey with you. Without you God, we cannot even understand. We want to commit each one of us who is able to join right now. And those who are attending it physically, Almighty God. Even for them who are about to login or to go into the boardroom. Almighty Jehovah, we pray you quicken them so that we can start to receive these blessings together. We honor you. We give you the glory for whom you are. Be with us God this hour as we go deeper into our hand. We commit even our leader, our facilitator in your hands, Almighty Jehovah. Use him as a vessel as we all study together. You know, as we leave this meeting, we'll say we are praised. In Jesus' name we pray with thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen, amen, amen. Thank you so much. We are just continuing. The last time we met, the last time we had the Bible study, we did the reasons for working with God. And in case you have just forgotten, we are still doing the series of walking with God. We have done what walking with God entails. And reasons for walking with God. They want us to just discuss or to enlighten ourselves on the characteristics of working with God. And and characteristics are just the, the property. Properties. Maybe them that works with God. Them that had worked with God. And also them that are still working with God. And we can just, of course, we just want to see what is it that is very promiscuous in them that works with God? If I say that I am working with God, what is the character that you can see in me? That I am working with God? I think we are just going to look at that in the next few minutes and that will be our devotion and our study for today. So to start us off, I want us to read John chapter 15 and verse number four. So in case you are there. John 15 and verse four. John, the gospel. 15 and verse four. Who is there and can read for us? Yes, we have, we have, we have someone here in the boardroom who wants to read. Yes. John 15 verse four says, remain in me as I also remain in you. No branch can bear fruit by itself. It must remain in the vine. Neither can you bear fruit unless you remain in me. Thank you. Thank you. I hope we have heard the reading, remain in me as I also remain in you. No branch can bear fruit by itself. It must remain in the vine. Neither can you bear fruit unless you remain in me. These are words of Jesus when he was talking, talking to his disciple. With regards to characteristics of them that works with God. And in response to the verse we have just read, which is John 15 and verse four. What are some of the characteristics or what are the highlights and what are the revelations you can see? In John 15, four, when we are talking about characteristics of them that works. Same one, willing to. People who want to listen to this. And continue. Okay. Thanks to. So if you're living in him. And he brings me, uh, the better of us seeing in, uh, bringing glory to his name. Yes. Thank you. Mary is talking about fruitfulness or productivity as a characteristic of working with God. Which is very true. Any other? Yes. I'll see you have a point.
They are, they are also patient in all circumstances. Even if they face calamities or if they see others in problems or suffering. They are led into encourage and comfort. And mostly you don't have the spirit of fear because you know the one you believe. So in all the situations, you, you wait upon the Lord and you wait him in courage. Not, not showing any signs of fear.
All right. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Patience and exercising patience in all circumstances. And waiting on God, just like you have said. And by the way, the aspect of waiting on God is, 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 is very, very true. And the Bible talks about him or them that wait upon the Lord. If you wait on God, then it means you are trusting in him and you are working with him. Thank you so much. Any other in regards to John 15, four, which says, remain in me and I also remain in you. No branch can bear fruit by itself unless it remains in the vine. So this one clearly indicates that on your own you cannot do it. You have to accept the fact that it is, you have, you must have a source of where you anchor yourself. And every branch, like for example, a tree. A branch cannot be on its own. A branch must be and will always be connected to the vine. When a branch is connected to the vine, that is when productivity and is, is assured. So in regards to John 15, four. What are some of the characteristics you can say are for them that works with God? We have dealt with fruitfulness or productivity. Then we talk, we have talked of patience in all circumstances. When we talk of patience in all circumstances, we talk about how regardless of the situation where you are, can you really be patient on waiting on God? And before we just continue. If you, if you look at what passion, what impatient did in Genesis during the life of Abraham and Sarah. I think we, we can talk of that a little bit before we continue. And of course, Abraham was working with God. But because of impatience, which the wife had, Sarah gave the slave or the servant, which was hard. You know, now for them to have a child. And we know whatever happened on that particular, on that particular time. Because they gave back to Ishmael and of course, Ishmael was not the child which God ordained for Moses to have, for not Moses, but Abraham to have. So what are some of the what are some of the consequences of being impatient with God? Which can happen to the life of an individual who works or who is a Christian? Consequences of being impatient with God. On first please. When you are saying from the audience, can we have a check? But I'll just give an example. Soul was supposed to, I think this was in first sermon. And 13th album, uh, motion. Where we found soul and his best to look for a person to come and fasten his presence to God. But because it assumes that the prophet has taken too long. Goes ahead of the person's sacrifice himself. Which is against God's command. It was then, it was the prophet's job to offer this particular sacrifices. And later as you read, uh, the verses, uh, that initially God had ordained that Jesus would come from the image of his soul. But this particular experience where soul has become impatient. We see God changing his mind. With regards to this servant or soul. And he says that I'll have to, I'll have to look for another person who where the son will come from. We look, we have to look for another ancestry of Jesus. My semi always goes to dream how to present it as a consequence of being impatient. Okay, we have, Mary is talking about the life of King Saul. And how impatient he was. And the consequence. Now to the online team, what are some of the consequences of being impatient with God that has ever happened to you? Or anybody you know? This person is working with God, yes. But they have, at some point, they grew impatient until they bungled their work with God. Or maybe you can give an example of your own life situation? Or any other which you think has ever happened? The consequence of being impatient with God? Hello? Or you people, you have never been impatient with God. You are always patient. Consequences of being impatient with God?
It is, is crime. This is Grace. Would, would we say, would we say a lot of crime? Crime is largely driven by one, the, the lack of knowing God, but also just being impatient with his provision. Cause I find like a lot of people stealing now. I'm using the current situation where there's a lot of muggings going on right now. And you just wonder, do all this for no God? Are they impatient that God will not provide for them? Because if you look at the economic situation, all of us in different capacities are, are not where we were or there's no or the, 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 the money is not flowing as it was flowing before. But we haven't run, we haven't looked for solutions, for solutions like grabbing people's phones. So I look at those who grab people's phones and, and, and using knives. Well, they may be lacking the knowledge of God, but are they also impatient? Because God delivers them in different ways. So they are going out for it and in the process, you know, you can die. So I'm wondering why, whether, whether that is being impatient with God? Or it is being just not knowing God? Maybe that one you can explain.
Oh yeah. Thank you. That, that, that's a good one. You have used the current situation. And of course, it falls on two categories. One, and not having the knowledge of God. And of course, him that does not have the knowledge of God will not know the repercussion of whatever he or she is doing. And also even after, after knowing, you know, him that involved in, in robbery, in stealing, also in mugging and any other side kind of activities. Number one, they are not trusting the, 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 the provider. And of course, God cannot provide for you when you steal. That one, you are providing for yourself. So these people, these people have, have outgrown the knowledge of him that, of, of him that provides, which is God. So they have become impatient with God and the consequence is that I want to get this and I really need to get it. And so sometimes they also know that God gives. But of course, they want it as soon as possible per se. And so they will involve themselves in such a situation. So it is both not knowing God and also being impatient. Of course, if you don't know God, you will not know his traits. And even the trait of God of being on provider. You cannot know. So you go out of your way, you start to look for yourself. I think it falls in both to not knowing God and also being impatient. Yes, thank you so much Grace for that. Another consequence of being impatient. Mary?
I think also if you are impatient, it makes you lose focus on God. Remember like when Peter was walking on the water, when he started focusing on the waves, he feared. So when you lose the focus, you lose everything about God. Because if you can keep yourself where you have ever been impatient, like making a Q somewhere. If you are so impatient, that kind of complaining will come from your heart. And all sort of sins will now surround you. And now you lose the goal. And at the end of the day, you know, this victory of entering the kingdom of God just because of wanting impatient. It makes you go so wild. So you go to so many ways. Totally you lose the focus and forget that God was with you as your provider. Instead of praying, you choose to lose his focus and you no longer now enjoy his company.
Oh wow. Thank you for that Nancy. Actually, if you grow, if you grow impatient, then you will focus on whatever is happening to you right now. And you will never think of what God says about you. You will only use your current situation to judge on the trait of God. At the same time, you will use your current situation in order for you to meet your needs. Thank you for that. Yes, Mia, do you have something to say?
Yes, sir. I go back to the point that Chris, I think. My, rather the question. Because when I'm looking at impatience and I'm a little bit from a normal day to day activity. Maybe, maybe a day you're at a full, someone just cuts you in or traffic. And the natural, the natural reaction for most of us, ready to give that person a piece of your mind. And over the course of my study of the Bible and hope is going, I discover that one, of course, patience is a fruit. And it's a mistake in delicious by. So what happens when I, when I plant a seed? I won't eat that fruit tomorrow. It must be exposed to sunlight or time or that. Same, same thing goes with this fruit of a holy spirit. I realize that in life, God will put for this person, you're using, you're using patience, my patience. So for God to contribute patience, he put me in a situation where I'm with us around it by impatient people. I'm a the situation around me in a relationship that and I'm going to be impatient. Maybe so then when, when I'm exposed to such situations, it is looking for God to put me in a place of being shameful. But for me to defend quickly, who may be the struggle as to the patience. Such a reason, next time someone maybe cuts me and cuts in the middle of traffic. Into a layer. So that's my, my a way but he will have one figure and volume there. But it is for me to realize that negation patience is big and it needs to be worked on. So yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Mary is trying to bring the point of impatience can be a daily to daily activity by the way. How do we, how do we react when we, when we are outside the church compound? How do we react when we are at work? How do we react with our fellow colleagues in whichever place we go? How do we see such kind of things come out? And for example, maybe you are, you are in a, you are in a job. And you are, you, you, someone just like, I remember one time we were wheeling a car. And somebody wanted to overtake us. And of course, the driver was a pastor. In that. That I, I thought, I thought, I thought the driver could excuse to leave for the other guy to, 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 to pump. In fact, we were, we, we wanted pump the tank wheel. I thought that the pastor could leave him to do it, but whatever he did was very good because all of us were busy. And of course, if protocols were to be followed, we were to be the first. And when we look at the other side, if you again give yourself in such particular situation, people may take advantage of you. But whatever I'm saying is this, in workplace, in your home, sometimes we grow impatient. But when we grow it, do we realize? So that we go back to the track of being patient in all circumstances. Thank you for that. That was not our point of discussion, but it was just that the impression. We are still talking about characteristics of working God. And we have looked at two. And our, our theme verse was, is coming from the book of John 15, four. Of remaining in Jesus and him remaining in you. And you as a person knowing that you cannot bear any fruit when you are connected to him. So in relation to that, what are some of the characteristics of them that works with God? I am doing this recap for them that have joined us physical right now and them that have joined us online in the last few minutes. Characteristics of working with God. Any other point?
Yeah, maybe if I may, if I may join there and, and say and talk about righteousness, just remaining very, very right. Yearning to be righteous. I think this is a very typical case of again, day to day living where people ask you, like when you apply for a tender, they ask you, you, who do you know there? And the first thing, the, the, you are qualified as a vendor. And, and, and this is a very typical thing. And sometimes when you say, I don't know anybody, they tell you, okay. You're apple, you would succeed. But if, because they want you to know who you know, so that you, I think then you, you, we sort of find ourselves in situations where as Christians, we are challenged by this situation surrounding us. Because sometimes it's expected that if you don't know anybody there, then you won't get the job. Because sometimes it's expected that if you don't know anybody there, then you won't get the job. But I've also found that if you know yourself and trust yourself and you don't know anybody, the, 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 the shared, the, the, the belief that if it's my job and God has ordained this for me, I will get it. And I don't have to, to know anybody. And this is something I finally, I find constantly when I go, like when I talk to the youth, they ask me, how do you survive with jobs or government as an entrepreneur or government? Do you know anybody? And I, I, I simply tell them, you don't have to know anybody. What is yours is yours. God will grant it to you because you, he's already, he's already ordained for you and you're going to get it. But I think that is a very hard, it's a very hard sale in a world where everybody believes that you cannot get it uh until you know somebody, somebody who knows somebody, somebody who knows somebody. It's been, it's been spoken so many times that it's almost become normal. Therefore, when you, when you, when you are trying and you're not doing that, you almost look like you're, you're the exception in the society. Where else it should have been the other way around, where we are the many of us believing in God and believing that if it's your job, you will get it. But now we seem to be becoming the fewer. So for me, I say, if you remain in God and he remains in you, I think you are very confident of knowing that it is, it is, it is we are, we are, we, we get our jobs and we get our provision from him and not anybody else. And that, that reliance on a human being, an uncle you knew, a government person you knew, then diminishes. That, 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 that is what I, I, I'm doing like that, what you're turning today, being very practical in my life. And I, and, and that is what I think is what we all need to be championing. So I don't know that to call it being righteous or to call it being, or to call it living, or to call it maybe living your Christian values with you every day. I don't know what the word you, what, 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 what word I can use it because it's, it's, it's more of a value, your value system on, and, and remaining righteous. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Grace. Uh it is, it is, it is very common and it is, it is really there. And that sometimes before you do anything, and maybe you share with a friend, or maybe you share with your spouse, or share with your parent. And most of the frequently asked questions is whom do you know? And whom do you know has become the question of the day when people apply for jobs? Whom do you know has become a question of the day when people apply for gender? Whom do you know has become very frequent in terms of when people want to get uh, that people want to get trounced? Of course, it is good to know people and it is good to relate. But sometimes you can have, you can be very confident in human beings and forgetting the place of God. When applying or when doing, when doing anything. And we don't despise the fact that sometimes you don't need to struggle in here. You are qualified, yes, like for example, in my case, when I, when I was going for an attachment. The place where I was going for an attachment, um I just, I just told, I just told a friend of mine that we should be going for an attachment. And they asked me, have you gotten? Then I told him, no, I haven't gotten. Then he said, print that letter, bring it to me, then I will take it to the, to the organization. And that is how I got an attachment in, when I was taking compass in that particular organization. But we don't despise the fact that God also uses men to bless other men. We have to relate, but sometimes we have to be very confident in God. We have to be very, very confident in God all the times. So that even if you know anybody when you are applying for anything, do your part because you are qualified, trust in God. If God will use the other person in order for you to get the job well and good. And sometimes you can give all that you have to man. Uh then you fail. And of course, men have always failed men. But at that point, which Grace has raised is very, 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 very practical. So in, in the process of working with God, I believe you should fully, not partially, but you should fully trust in him in all circumstances. Thank you so much, Mary. Uh Grace, any other person? Yes?
I'm adding on the point of uh working with God. Um I think as a Christian, as a person who works with God, you have to give God a chance to speak to you. But only you giving him what you want, but also sitting back and trying to be certain.
Giving God a chance to speak to you. You don't only give God uh conditions and the things that he's supposed to do for you. It is actually, it is, it is very true, very, very true. Giving God a chance to, actually, when you are working with somebody, it has to be, it has to be a two-person affair. You are not the only one contributing in your work, but the contribution comes from all of you or both of you and you are too. I thank you so much, uh Perpetual, for that. Any other characteristic that you can talk about?
Yeah, I was to add on what Grace was talking about. Also, totally, totally depending on the word of God. You must be armed so that whenever you go, wherever you go, whether there are those offices, whoever you fight, just know yourself, you are not, your hope is not in anybody on a human being level. Your hope is in God. So like this has passed to all his days. We should be very, very careful of compromising. But when you are armed with the word of God, you are able to defend whatever comes on your way by quoting the word of God. Like just this is saying, it's not only bread, bread which can make somebody live. You have to be, and if you don't read the word of God like what we are doing right now, you'll be weak and you find yourself compromising. But when you can quote so many things like where we are reading, remain in me and I, I would remain in you. It's a quotation. There's nothing which will come without, without a quotation. So you should be armed, led to defend God by the word which is coming from his book.
Hmm, sure. Remaining in him. But there remaining in him is also part of reading the word of God. Very true. It's very educative. Thank you so much. And uh and depending on the word of God and connecting with the point which Perpetual gave of allowing God to talk to you. God talked to us in different avenues. One of them is uh through his word. And when you remain in the word of God, then you will clearly hear him more to you. And when you are a person who knows how God speaks to him or her, then you will never, ever confuse the voice that speaks to you. And that is very, very important and very, very um informative in terms of working with God and being a characteristic of them that works with God. There is someone here who has not talked, but I know she has a point. Any other characteristic of working with God?
Yes, uh let me add that one of the characteristics of working with God is knowing, knowing who God is, knowing his attributes. That he, he is remitress, he is not limited by the circumstances. He is trustworthy. You can trust him with the big things and the small things. And that he is faithful. Whatever he has said, he will do, he, he does. And how do we know all this? As one of my colleagues said, through the word, through reading his word to know what happened to those people who are living or working with God in the Bible, like Elijah, Elisha. What did they do? How did they uh bring out the attributes of God in the various miracles that they, they performed? And therefore, one of the, the, the characteristics of knowing or having a walk with God is knowing his attributes. Who is he? What is he capable of? And his sovereignty, his uh all-knowing nature and how we can trust him with big and small things, his compassion, his, you know, all, all those attributes, they will help you knowing that whether you have a big issue or a small issue, he's, he's interested in what you are going through because he's all laughing and kind to us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Knowing the attributes of God. And actually, you talked of trusting God in all circumstances, the big and the good, uh the big and the small things. And I was just asking myself, if you can trust God to heal your headache, can you trust him to heal your cancer?
Yes. Yeah, yes, yes. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And the reason why I asked that question, there are some people, by the way, it, there is, there, there's a point where they draw the line. And they can no longer trust in God. They can only trust God in whatever, when they see that the direction they are taking is going to achieve their goal. But if they have seen things not going in their direction, then they start to question. And so that brings the aspect of, in all circumstances, can you trust God? If God healed you of headache, can you trust him to heal you of whatever the doctors have said that you cannot be healed?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yes. There, there is nothing impossible with the God. So you can trust him even for bigger things. He is bigger than any problem, any disease. So you can read it back to him.
Amen.
Yeah, and even if you are not healed, you are going through that suffering. There is a reason why he is taking you through that, either to build your faith or to, you, you, to have other purposes accomplished through that sickness. So he may heal you, he may not heal you, but all in his good purpose and in his plan.
Well, well, very true.
That's why you give thanks to God in all circumstances. Because God is good always.
Well.
And I can also add another characteristic of being obedient to God's will and all his commands.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Obedience to God's will and all his commands.
Yeah.
Well. Actually, we have to really grow our faith and come to a point of uh leaving every clue to God. There's a song which goes, all to Jesus, I surrender. And sometimes you can, you can just, you can just look at a believer and ask yourself, has this guy really surrendered? Uh suffering and pain and grief may really make us lose focus in God. Just like somebody talked about focusing on God. And once you lose the focus in God, that is the onset of you being deviating from the ways. But how I pray that we will keep looking unto Jesus, as the Bible says in the book of Hebrews twelve two, that he is the author and the finisher of our faith. So the faith that we have in him is the one who initiated it. You did not start your own faith. The faith that you believe in is the one who started and is the one who will accomplish it. So everything that we trust in him will always be there in him. Now, the point of being obedient to God's will and its command. If you can remember during the times of Moses and the Israelites, he kept on telling the Israelites in the book of Deuteronomy that be obedient to the laws that the Lord has given you. And the consequences of being obedient to the laws that the Lord had given them was because that, that they may be called the children of God and the Lord him must be called they are God. Now, in regards to being obedient, sometimes we don't become obedient and we don't follow the will of God. And you, you, you have seen how things have come out. Like for example, in the life of Saul, when prophet Samuel gave him an instruction to go and destroy King Agag and all the household and everything. And before prophet Samuel could come and perform the sacrifice, King Saul went ahead and did it. And he for, he, he, he did not do exactly what Samuel did. And when Samuel came, Samuel was really, really angered. And the last statement which Samuel made was obedience is better than sacrifice.
Yeah.
So you can, you can do something out of disobedience, although you will be doing the right thing, but now that you are disobedient, it will not result in that result. So there is need of being obedient as a characteristic of um of working with God. Thank you so much for that. Any other? You want to take a few, I guess we finish. Yes, Mia?
Uh uh one characteristic that has that's come as a thought is peace. Because the Bible says in Romans eight six, I said, that you will keep a perfect peace with a mind in stable. Because I just, I knew so far, I mean, you have my mind uh focused on him. And it's um putting a positive cause, and the consequence of that is peace. Because when I tend to, I don't assume and I'm staying on him. It is basically saying, it is me uh working with him. So peace is one characteristic of a person or people who work with God.
All right. Peace. You've talked about peace?
Yes.
Yes. Actually, there were talks about Jesus as our peace. And so when you work with him on a day-to-day basis, you will have the peace. And he also says that he will give you peace which transcends or which surpasses human understanding. People will be asking themselves how peaceful you are. But they doesn't know the, 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 the theory, or they doesn't know the secret where your peace comes from. And of course, it comes from God. Now, as we come to a conclusion. Today, we were looking at Today we were looking at the characteristics of working with God. And we have uh. Talked about several characteristics of them that are. Works with God and we have seen maybe the consequences of not doing. The right thing or doing against the characteristic of working with God. How I pray that this. Uh this enlightenment will be really helpful and resourceful to our lives. So that as we continue to journey through this journey of faith. We shall always remain to be God, as our divas was saying today. That remain in me and I remain in you. And of course, that tells you that um. If you don't remain in him, then he cannot remain in you. So it is a condition. And a condition, you either do it or not do it. Remain in me and I remain in you. If you don't remain in him, he cannot remain in you. And of course. Um you cannot bear fruit on your home. He uses um a description of a vine and a branch. And when you cut a branch. From the vine, then the branch cannot bear fruit. The branch can only bear fruit when it remains mounted. On the vine. And so that is the life of a, that is the simple. Definition of the life of a Christian, remain in him and he will remain in you. If you want to be fruitful, if you want to be productive, you have to remain. In him and you have to accept the fact that outside him. You cannot do anything. Without him. You cannot do anything. So you have to be with him. It has to be a partnership. And in every form of partnership. Uh we have different form of partnership, them that have uh, them, them that are doing um. Economics and businesses. We have the quasi-partners and the full-time partners. You cannot be a quasi-partner and expect God to be with you. So you have to be a full-time. Partner in him. You have to partner with him. You have to always talk to him. You have to be obedient. You have to allow him speak to you. You have to know his attributes. And you, of course, you need to be patient in all circumstances. And now, maybe if we, if we are just ending, I would like um. If you have anything to add. Before we end or before we finish by a word of prayer. We start with the them that are online, then we go to them that are onsite here with me in the church boardroom. Anybody with anything to add? Nancy, Grace and Mary, anybody?
Yes, let me, let me add. This is Grace. I, I think what I would like to add is just maybe uh to remind us that uh. Uh that Jesus grew, I think it's Luke, Luke two fifty-two that says, Jesus grew in wisdom and knowledge. And I think stature, I'm not, I will not be very conversant, but the words that I keep, 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 keep me going there is that he gained favor from God and man. And therefore, when, when, when we talk about even this work that we are looking for or whatever we look for, we, we first entrust ourselves in God. And then God will bring to us men of favor and women of favor, who would be, who would then shape our, 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 our. Journey or prophetic journey, whatever we're headed to. So it is to, that statement purely tells us that even before we trust man. We first gain favor from God and man. And that once you've gained favor with man. It is so easy for the rest, like in your case, you already believed you'd go for internship. You didn't even know where you're going to go. But because you believed, God then gave, gave you favor and by, and by extension, put alongside men of favor. But you didn't have to bribe, you didn't have to get corruption. That's, that's what I'm trying to say, that if we as Christians. Can, can totally uh imagine ourselves in the world. We'll be knowing that we are highly favored by God. And that's the first part, that's, that's, that's why we should anchor ourselves. And the same God will then align men and women of favor. Who will carry us on to the destiny that God, to the destiny that God has planned for each and every one of us, because each and every one of us is here on this earth. For a certain purpose and you will fulfill your purpose if you're anchored in God and you'll gain favor from man. That, that would be how I sum it up in that instance.
Right. Thank you. Amen. Any other?
That I um I should always remember. In my work with God as a matter of application. That uh. He is compassionate. He has no limits. And therefore I can trust him in every circumstance. In my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Man.
Amen. Here on site, Perpetual.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh what I've gotten in. Um I should put rely on God and that comes in, that comes in patience and being very good to be well.
Thank you. Yeah. That's we finish.
Uh for me to recognize. Uh. The fact that we are designed to work with God. And if you look uh. Genesis. Around two uh. What I would say is a good, a good will come. Um through the pool of the deep and have a with Adam.
Hmm.
So even, even if that relationship was distorted, I was broken because of the fall of man. Again, that is why Jesus came to restore what was once there. So by design, each of us is. Uh means to have that work with God. Uh day to day, as it will, I miss, I skip a day uh. Of course, I feel homesick. Again, it deserves a time for me to uh. Be myself down because I'm a compassionate father. And uh, like a father, like a father, the prodigal son, he needs for us. With open arms to come to him again. Yes.
Amen. Amen, amen. Thank you so much. And actually, it is a good thing to work with God. It's the best decision you can ever make for you to continue working with God. Always remember. That. Outside what he has planned for you. You can, you may be living, yes. But if you are not living the purpose of which God created you for. Then you have not started living. So ensure that the life you are living is not a waste. This is something like when somebody comes and tells you right now that they left you, maybe fifty years, fifty-five years, twenty-six years. Then you are being told that you are, it was just a dream. So you have successfully wasted the half. Of your season of, of being on the earth. So that desire to always work with God, it is something which is being cultivated. You can start, but at some point it may, it may seem to be tedious. But God is always on your side. He will always be on your side if you remain in him. If he sees your struggles, he will be there to uplift you. If he sees how consistent you want to become, he will be there to, to uplift you and. Take you through and say, come, that I may work with you. But if you want to be. Wise in your own eyes. Then you will really and truly miss it. Thank you for turning up for today's Bible study. We meet next Tuesday, same time, same venue, church boardroom. And also the. Those that will be able to join us online. We shall be continuing to digress through. Working with God. And my name is Calvin Sabok. I'm born again and I love the Lord. Thank you so much. I will now ask Grace kindly pray for us as we finish. Then, just like I have been saying, always. Uh engage members of your districts. I know several districts are involved here. Please involve them. Ask them to join. Ask them if they may be around church Tuesday evening, that they may come and we get to learn. Together. If today's session has really helped you and has nourished you. I'm very sure you can't neglect the fact that uh. You call or you invite another person, even if they are not from our church PC and just invite them. It is the word of God and we need to share and everybody needs to hear it. Thank you. Karim Sanak Grace.
Okay, thank you very much for this opportunity. First and foremost, so thank you for this initiative. I think it's a beautiful and brilliant opportunities if we can manage to. Uh be doing it frequently. Because the more we, I, I think one of us here commented that there's no other way than hanging, keeping, keeping ourselves very close to the word. And, 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 and yearning and to learn and dig deeper into the word. Because if you're not anchored in the word, then that's how we get all this, we, we lose focus. So I've loved listening to this conversation and therefore, uh I'll keep, I'll encourage others to, to come in. And also just thank the people who joined in. I think that the discussions are very fruitful and every day you join a discussion, you learn something. I've, I've, I've really loved the story on focus. There, there's a, 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 one of us who commented about the fact that if you don't trust in God, you will always lose focus. There are many, many other things I've picked, but that for me is very key because it's very relevant. So thank you very much for the contribution for those who are here and those who are in the, in the boardroom. So let us pray. Let us pray. Our dear heavenly master, King of Kings, we come before you this evening with our hearts full of thanksgiving, thanking you, Lord, that you've made the time for us to join together here. Your word tells us that where one or two are gathered indeed, Lord, you are present. We know, Lord, that you have been with us, that you have been nourished spiritually, mighty Father. We don't take it for granted that you give us a time and that we also made the time to just come and learn more from you and understand your word, mighty Father. We want to anchor all our lives in you. We have been reminded that in all circumstances, mighty Father. That we learn to thank God and to believe in you and to trust in you fully. This was a wonderful evening, mighty Father. And we pray, mighty Father, that you call many more to come and listen to your word. And even as we look forward to next week, mighty Father. That you will be with us and you will keep us alive, mighty Father, that you've given us a gift of life graciously, mighty Father. And therefore, as we continue living every day, let us be reminded that you, you are in us and that you are in you, mighty Father, that we do not depart at any one time from the word. We, as we plan to go back to our homes for those who are in church and for those who are online, mighty Father. I pray that your peace and blessings, mighty Father, go with us and that when we wake up tomorrow morning, we shall remember to give you all the glory and honor to you, mighty Father. These are prayer of faith, believing and trusting in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so much for logging in today, God. Stay on a fruitful week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you. God bless you.
God bless you too.